My wonderful students from California, Matthew. Matthew, you're only ten year old. I'm not doing child abuse, but you're reading this uh Killer Angels of uh Gettysburg. Go to the chapter one, the spy. The spy, read the spy for me and ask me any question. And I'm gonna show you what the spy look like. Okay. Go, read aloud clear.
One, okay. He rode into the darkness, dark of the woods and dismounted, he crawled up. Award on his belly over cool rocks out into the sunlight. And suddenly he was in the open and he could see fo- four miles, there were. There was a whole vast army below him, filling the valley like smoky, like a smoking river. It came out of a blue. Re- rainstorm in the east and overflowed the narrow ra- valley road. Coiling along the stream, narrowing and choking out at the white bridge. Bathing out into the yellowest dust of of the June. But still visible on the farther road beyond the blue hills.
Okay, okay, Matthew, this guy is the spy. The spy, the whole Yankee army coming to this way, he founded the whole Yankee army. And this guy's spy is based upon the real person. Henry Thomas Harrison. See? The beautiful thing about this one is it's based upon the real history. And it's also in the movie. And he have a biography. And then we are going to read about it. Now, now, why don't you read a little bit about the biography of this person? Okay.
Okay, Henry Thomas Harrison was born in Nashville, Tennessee. On, on, on the twen- twenty third of April eighteen thirty two. And he decided to become an actor than rather go to school. Due to his small stature, he did, he did not get many parts as an actor. He decided to join the Mississippi statement. Matilla and.
Ma- militia, 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 militia means civilian army, go.
In, in the spring of eighteen sixty one, when the American Civil War broke out. In November eighteen sixty one Confederate Secretary of War James.
Sorry, 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 let's make it bigger, let's make it bigger. And he was paid, okay, he was a spy, okay, go.
And he became a spy for General James Longstreet after.
Sorry, 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 so, 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 so this, so is this guy. And he was paid in what? He was paid in gold. Why, why do you think the spy are paid in gold?
Because uh because spying is very important and very hard.
And very dangerous because when the enemy catch spy, what do they do to them?
They wa- they uh hang them and get information out of them.
Yeah, that's right, and and I get shot at the end. Because they are not going to be treated that as a POW, prisoners of war. Prisoners of war have rights and spy have no right, okay, keep on finishing, go. Harrison was paid in gold.
Gold and and he spied on the Union, Union Army of the Potomac in June and July eighteen sixty three.
Wonderful, fini- finish the whole thing, so, go.
Warning Longstreet that um.
We are going to have this Longstreet, the Longstreet is one of the number two most important generals in the sauce, in the sauce. Number one, Robert E. Lee, number two. Long, General Longstreet, go ahead.
Um warning Longstreet that the Army of the Potomac was camped just a few miles from the Confederates near Tannetown in Pennsylvania. Harrison's intelligence would lead to the Battle of Gettysburg. And he took up a musket and fought George Pickett's charge.
Okay, so, so George Pickett is really, he, in the West Point, he is the number one. The worst students ever, and he's very brave, and the Pickett's charge. Is a disaster, is a big disaster, our wonderful book talk about. Pickett's charge. Is one of the biggest disaster for the sauce. Okay, so this wonderful book and the movie, I'm going to talk about it, keep on going, go.
Okay, um. Oh, Pickett's charge, Harrison was spy on the Union in New York City. Although none of his discoveries were as important as the information he supplied to Longstreet before Gettysburg. Harrison and his family moved to Mexico a- after the war's end. And he later become a gold prospector in Montana.
Wow.
Um, mon- monsee.
Municipal, municipal means the city. The city reform league detective in Ohio, oh, he become a detective again. And pensioner in Kentucky, pensioner is the government gave him money so he can. He died in, what is this, where is this, I don't know, Kentucky.
Kentucky on eight, on Oc- on the eighteenth of October nineteen twenty three at the age of ninety one.
Wow, that's a very long age, so. The moral of this story is, can you say straight? This wonderful book are based upon real American history. Make sense? So you read loud and clear and ask me any question, so, go.
Okay. The spy tucked himself behind a border and began counting flags. Must be twenty thousand, thousand men, visible at all at once. Two whole Union corps, he could make out the familiar black hats of the Iron Brigades. Troops belonging to John Reynolds first corpse. First corpse, he looked at his watch, noted, noted the time and they were, they were coming very fast. The army of the, of the Potomac never moved this fast.
Beautiful.
The daddy was murderously hot and there's no wind and the dust hang above the army like a yellow veil. He thought there'll, there'll be some of them die of the heat today, but then. They're coming faster than they ever came before. He slept back down into the cool dark and rode slowly downhill towards a silent, silent, empty coun- coun- country to the north. What luck he could. Make the southern, make the su- southern line before downfall. After down, uh uh, I mean nightfall, after nightfall, it would be dangerous.
Wow.
He must not seem to hurry. The horse was already tired, and yet there was the pressure that. That the great blue army behind him building like water behind a cracking dam, he rode out. Into the open, into the land between the armies. There were fat, fat Dutch barns. Prim German orch- orchards, but there are no cattle in the fields and no horses. Houses everywhere were empty and dark. He, he alone, he was alone in the heat and silence. And, and then it began to rain. And, and he rode, and he ha- and he rode head down into the monstrous lightning.
That is very dangerous because when you're in the open. I ride my bike in the rain. And the lighting are just above me, I was so scared. Make sense? But, oh, the biking are more dangerous because there's a. There's metal, right? Bike is a metal.
Yeah, but then uh water is also conducted, all life forms have water.
That's right, that's right, and this guy is out in the open and he have his horse and. He have a weapon on him, and a weapon are metal, and when, when he's all wild, the water is conductive to electricity. So the moral of the story is, don't ride your bike in the rain. You ride your bike, right? Don't ride your bike in the rain, keep on going.
Okay, um. Um, okay.
First lighting, go ahead.
He did not know where the Su- southern headquarters was, but had, but he. But he kept riding, he did not. Oh, what, uh, he kept running, wait, wait, but he, southwarden's word was, but he knew. He had to be somewhere near Chambersburg. He had smelled out the shape of the, of Lee's army in all the rumors and a Bartok. And Bartok and newspapers and hysteria had, he had just drifted through all. Over eastern Pen- Pennsylvania. And Pennsylvania.
Do you know anything about Pennsylvania?
Yeah, uh, and.
Pennsylvania was, was established by this person called Penn. P E N N, that's one person's name. He set up this colony, Sylvania, Pennsylvania. And they set up this city called Philadelphia. What is Philadelphia mean? The city of a brotherly love. Make sense? So, so they, they, this Penn make this colony to protect people, especially Catholic people. So they want to live in harmony with, between the religions and with the native people. So they are very nice to the Native Americans, so Pennsylvania. Are famous for what? For agriculture. They make food, okay? So they are supposed to be rich, so Lee's army have something to eat, have food to eat right now, keep on going. Pennsylvania, so they are happy because they finally they have food, go.
Pennsylvania, and on, and on that day, he was perhaps the only man alive to knew. Who knew the positions of both armies. He carried the knowledge with heart and lovely pride. Lee would, would not be far away, so finding the headquarters was not a problem, the problem was. Fighting through the picket line in the.
What's in the picket line? Picket line are the guard who protect their army's position, especially their headquarter, their generals. And. To stop the spies from coming in, okay? So their own soldiers are going to. Stop him, picket line, because picket line, these soldiers can shoot any spy, go. Picket line.
One, um. Um, so picket line and um.
In the dark.
Oh, yeah.
The problem was riding through a picket line in the dark.
Um, picket line in, okay, the rain grew worse, he could not even move under a tree because of the lightning. He had to take care not to get lost, he wrote quoting Shakespeare's.
Because he was a Shakespeare performer, and I teach all the Shakespeare, you have to study Shakespeare with me. Nobody else.
Line ahead somewhere in the dark. The sky opened and poured down on him. And he rode on, it will be rain, it will be rain tonight, let it come down, that was a speech of murderers. He had been an actor once, he had no stature and a small voice, and there are no big parts for him until the war came. And now, he was the only one who knew how good he was. If, if, if only they could see him work, old, old cold Longstreet and Longstreet and the rest. But everyone hated spies, I come a single spy, what's that? And call back, back relations. And the rain began to ease off and has, and he spurred the horse to a truck. My kingdom for horse.
Do you know this one? Do you know this quotation?
No.
A horse, my horse, my horse, my kingdom for horse, and I have to teach you this, I have to teach you, can you say straight for me? Can you say straight for me? Okay, you have to know this. My kingdom. For a horse. A horse, a horse. This one, uh, take notes, this one is from Shakespeare. Richard the Third, one, two, three. So he's a evil king, he's very bad king, before his death, he was yelling out. A horse, a horse, my kingdom for a horse, this is Richard Sir, my kingdom for a horse. So you have to know this, you have to know this, this is a real person in the U- in the United Kingdom history. And this is one of the very good performance. So the enemy are surrounding him. And he lost his horse and a good warrior need a horse. He cannot like a foot soldier fight on the food, he want a horse. He want give up his kingdom.
Lord of Norfolk, rescue! The king enacts more wonders than a man, daring and opposite to every danger. His horse is slain and all on foot he fights, seeking for Richmond in the throat of death. Rescue fair lord, or else the day is lost.
So she sees the fighting for the kingdom. Oh, by the way, this is real British history. Richard the Third, Act Five, Scene Four, from Shakespeare. So this guy is riding his horse and he's quoting Shakespeare because he's all alone, right? He's a spy, he's all alone and he's quoting Shakespeare, this is part of the movie. Richard the Third, I'm gonna teach you Richard the Third in the future.
A horse, my.
A horse, a horse, my kingdom for, he's a king. But he don't have the horse, he will die, and when he die, he have no kingdom.
My kingdom for a horse! Withdraw my lord. I'll help you to a horse. Slave, I have set my life upon a cast and I will stand the hazard of the die. I think there be six Richmond's in the field, five have I slain today instead of him. A horse! A horse!
Okay, that's enough, that's enough, so. These are the very important part of Shakespeare. And Shakespeare, Sh- English language and anything he quoted. I'm gonna teach you, go ahead.
Okay.
Very good line, he went on.
Very good, went on, reciting Henry the Fifth. Uh, fit, um, aloud, one more, one more into the breach.
No, 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 once.
Once.
More into, into the breach. Now, pay attention, okay? Once more into the breach, Henry the Fifth, this is Henry the Fifth. Once more upon the breach, and so he's a fighting with the French people. So this a British king, he's a boy king, he's a boy, okay? He's also a warrior. Once more unto, to the beach, and later on, I'm gonna teach you the whole speech. Henry the Fifth, Fifth, British people think he is the best king they have ever had. They are, he's a leading, a invading army, invading France, France, this is the king. Who's, what's his name? Henry the Fifth, Henry the Fifth. He's encouraging his soldier to attack the French city again. Now summarize what's going on, summarize what, can you hear, he, hear him clearly, yes or no?
I mean, yeah, so um they're invading like this little, this castle in Paris.
Yes, in France, mm-hmm.
And then, and, and, and then they're like. And then, and of that, and, and like, I think, I think like right outside of the gates.
That's right, of the French city, mm-hmm.
He's like trying to summon up courage.
Wonderful, 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 this is the best, I. Okay. So this is the whole speech, once more onto the breach, my dear friends, once more. Oh, close the wall up with our English dead. In peace, there's nothing so becomes a man as modest stillness and humility. But when the blast of the war blows in our ears, then imitate. The action of a tiger, stiffen the sinews, sum off the blood, they guide fair nature with a hard. Favored rage, then lend the eyes a terrible aspect. Let's pry through the portage of the head like a brass cannon. Make yourself angry, right? Before you attack the enemy, make yourself angry.
Oh, yeah, oh, one second, I accidentally closed this, but then it's still on.
Go, 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 go.
Mama, you can touch your email? Oh, I didn't, I accidentally closed, because the meeting's still on, okay? Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so, so我把这个发给你妈妈，然后呢，你要能把这个读下来或者抄下来，you are the best in the whole world, okay? You're the best kid ever. 这个很很酷，因为这个是，这个人呢，就是一个the best British king,然后this is the. One of the most important speech, once more onto the breach. Dear friend, once more,我们来听一下，然后你来读好吗？ 你先听他读，能听听吗？Can you hear him clearly, yes or no?
Okay.
He's encouraging the British soldier. 这是另外一个人演的Shakespeare. 我看看啊，你看，这个是哦，World, 哦，World War Two的时候，那个British想encourage他们的soldier. For Battle of Normandy, make sense? 这个是World War Two nineteen forty four的时候，不是那个B Day. Invasion of Normandy,所以说他们用这个Shakespeare去encourage the soldier, ready?
Dear friends, once more, or close the wall up with our English dead.
Okay,你来读着玩，okay? Matthew, you just read them, and if you make some mistake, I'm not going to yell at you, it's just for the fun of it. We are learning something for the fun, if the spy can do it. You can do it too, because this guy is risking his own life. Right? And he loved Shakespeare, and you should love Shakespeare too, right? This is Shakespeare, Henry the Fifth, now, read loud and clear, once more onto the breach, dear friends. Once more, your turn, go.
And once more and onto the breach, dear friends, once more, or close the wall up with our English dead. In the, in peace, there's nothing so becomes a man as modest stillness and humility. But when the blast of war blows in our ears, then imitate the action of a tiger. Uh, stiffen the sinews, sum up the blood, disguise fair nature with hard favored rage. Then lend the eye a terrible aspect. Let pry through the portage of the head like a brass cannon, let the brow o- overwhelm. As fairl- fearfully as a duck, I grated a gal's rock. Uh, overhang and jutty his confounded base. Swirled with the wild and wasteful ocean. Now sit the teeth and stretch the nostril wide. Hold hard on, the hold hard the breath and bend up every spirit to his, to his full height. Um. On, on you noblest English.
You noblest English, okay?
Um, whose blood is fed, fathers of, of war proof. Fathers that like so many Alexanders have sheathed their swords for lack of argument. Dishonor not your mothers now, and uh now a test, those whom you called fathers did beget to you. Be cop- be copy now to men of grosser blood and teach them how to war, and you good ye ol' man. Whose limbs were made in England, show us here the metal of your pa- battle of your posture, let us swear that you are worth. The breeding, which I doubt not. For there is.
For there is none of you so mean and base that has not noble luster in your eyes.
I see you stand like greyhounds in the slips, straining upon the start the games afoot. Follow your spirit and upon this charge cry God for Harry, England and Saint George.
You're doing wonderful job, you're doing a wonderful job, if this wonderful spy can do something, you can, okay? Just read two more pages and, yeah. Dramatize it, dramatize, you're doing wonderful, once more into the breach, late, late that afternoon.
That afternoon, um, he came to a crossroad and the sign of much cavalry have, having passed this way a few hours ago. He, his own way led north to Chambersburg, but he know, but he knew that Longstreet would have to know. Who these people, people were so close to his line. He debated a moment at the crossroads, knowing that there was no time, a delay would cost them daylight. Yet he was the man of pride, man of pride and tracks drew. Perhaps it was only Jeb Start, the spy.
Jeb, Jeb, Jeb Stock is a, is also a real person, he is a Confederate general, cavalry general. He's very daring, very famous, and oh, he got killed at the end of the Civil War, keep on going.
And the spy thought hopefully, respectfully, if it's start, I can ask for an armed escort all the way home. He turned and followed the traps. After a while, he saw a farmhouse and a man standing out in a field and in a peach orchard. And he spurred that way, the man was small and bald with a huge, with huge round arms and he spoke very, spoke very.
Why they speak back English? They are a German, Germanic people, German people, German people, okay, go.
The spy went into his act. A simple minded farmer, farmer seeking a runaway wife terrified of soldiers. The bald man regarded him swiveling, this uh disgust, uh disgustedly told. The so, the whole the soldiers that gone, that just gone by were pleased soldiers. Yankees, the spy asked, what town lies yonder in the front of Gettysburg? Well, that meant, name meant nothing.
Okay, okay, because Gettysburg, what is Gettysburg? Just whatever is a burger, burger, burg mean what? A city, right? A city in German, German language, it's not even an English name, it's a German tongue, it's a Germanic. A city in German, German language, it's not even an English name, it's a German tongue, it's a Germanic language. Nobody know because the city are so small, nobody out of Pennsylvania know Gettysburg. But after this battle, everybody in the world, educated people know Gettysburg, keep on going.
Okay, um, yeah, he, wait, okay, oh yeah.
But the name mean nothing, the spy turned and spurred by
The name meant nothing, the spy turned and spurred back to the crossroads. Yankee, Yankee Calvary meant John Burford's, Burford's colony, moving lickety split. Where was Stark? No escort now, he rode, he rode back again towards the blue hills. But the horse could not be pushed, he had to dismount and walk. That was the last, last sign of Yankees, he was move, he was moving up, so, he was moving up across South Mountain, he was almost home. Um, um, well beyond South Mountain was Lee and of course Longstreet. Strange, strange friendship, grim and gambling, Longstreet, formal and previous old Bobby Lee.
Hey, your homework over the weekend is to read as much as possible uh, about this wonderful book, as much as possible, but not too much, I don't, I want you to love the book and not to hate the book, okay? So, all the main characters in the book The Killer Angels. That is real in American history. American Civil War, all the main characters in the book, The Killer Angels, Killer Angels book, okay? All the main characters, let's see how many people. So this book is talk about the Battle of Gettysburg in the American Civil War. It's American Civil War, the novel is a fiction, but it's heavily based upon actual event, people and military strategy from July the first to July the third, three day, I told you the first book, The Golden Generals is about three year, okay? This book is even better, is about three day. Everything happened in three day and it's this wonderful book. Here's a list of the main historical character featured on the book, who are real people. Now, you're going to read, go.
Arnold, Josh, Joshua.
Lawrence Chamberlain, go, historical rule, go.
Commander of the for- former professor at Bowdoin College, famous for defending the Little Round Top on day two.
Day two, so we are going to, I'm going to teach you the day two, the strategy and also the movie and the military professor teaching us why the second day is a crucial point, later awarded Medal of Honor, the Congressional Medal of Honor, keep on going. General John Beaufort, go.
Union cavalry commander, led a crucial delaying act on general, on July first that allowed Union forces to take high ground.
General Meade.
Uh, General George Meade.
Not a very good general, not a very famous, not a very good general, not very brave. Therefore, Lee looked down upon him, Lee don't respect him. Because when Lee was uh, in charge of the West Point, he's not a good student.
Commander of the Army of the Parliament, assumed command just days before Gettysburg. Cautious but successful in holding, how, holding ground.
Because he's a very cautious, he's not very brave. So, even the day, Lee made a terrible mistake of underestimate General Meade. Keep on go, keep on going, Hancock.
And Hancock, the second corpse, the key leader on days, uh, corpse commander, second corpse. Instruct, instruct the mental and
Instrumental, instrumental mean very useful, instrumental.
Instrumental in rallying troops at Cemetery Hill. Well, key leader on days two and three. He, um, General John
He got killed, he got killed, okay, go.
Commander of the first corps, killed early on his
Wow, the first day he got killed by sniper, okay, go.
His actions helped secure strong defenses positions. General Governor Kay Weren, chief engineer, discovered the Confederate threat to to Little Round Top, he, his alert saved the left flank.
Wow, Confederacy, Confederacy, wrapping the, the most important thing, go.
A matter of the Confederate Army, a brilliant tactician. He, he led the invasion of the North, opposed slavery but fought for his own home state of the Vir- of Virginia.
Number two, most important is Long Street, go.
Lee, second in command, advocated defensive tactics disagreed with Lee's decision to attack Gettysburg.
He disagreed with day three, picket charge, he don't want to do the picket charge, but he have to obey. He argued with Lee, but when Lee making the decision, fatal decision, he know Lee's wrong. What he have to do, he obey Lee and do it, even though he know he's going to fail. Go, General, this is, this is a very dumb guy, very dumb, but very
Great.
Very, very brave, he's the number one.
George.
He's the number one, the worst students in the West Point, go. Division commander, he lost all his division, he's famous word, General Lee. I have no division, off the picket charge, off the picket charge. He lost majority of uh, his soldiers, now, I have to take, give you the image. Okay, the picket charge, very, very, very famous picket charge in the day number three. And in the day number three, Gettysburger eighteen sixty three, picket's charge. So, we are going to study very great detail about this major mistake and it's forever in the military history book, in West Point, in American, uh, uh, uh Commander School, West Point, they study this picket charge every year, okay, go.
General Richard
You, 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 commander, has, he make a terrible mistake, hesitant to attack Cemetery Hill, go.
Hesitant to attack Cemetery Hill, which may have changed the battle.
So use one hesitation mistake caused the loss of the Civil War for the sauce, go.
General June, June Ball, early, division commander under
And he's very angry about his uh, his, his boss, didn't do a good job.
Aggressive and politically influential post-war, played a controversial role in the Confederate, failed to press on day one. General Lewis Army stud, General, the great commander under Pickett. Close friend of Union General Hancock, Hancock mort- mortally wounded during Pickett's charge.
Oh, no, no, this guy, no, no, not, no, this guy is very brave, he lead his soldier in front, not at the back. So he was mortally wounded, he almost died, but then the, uh, the, 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 the physicians saved his life, go. General.
General Isaac Trimble, division ma- division commander briefly under E W. Um, oh, dang, I closed it again, mama! I closed it again.
Slowly to basic, it's okay, come on going.
Locked again. Okay.
Now, read aloud and clear yourself.
I, okay, Gen- General Isaac Trimble, divisional commander briefly under E W. Advocated for stronger Confederate attacks, wounded during Pickett's charge. Major General A, A P Hill, corpse commander, was ill during the battle, his corpse opened fighting on July first.
Okay, historical accuracy, I'm gonna send this one to you, mom, and uh, but anyway, read one more page, I don't torture you anymore, go, one more page. Your wonderful, our wonderful book.
Okay, um, uh, not now. There's, this was the last sign of Yankee, of the Yankees, he was moving up across South, of South Mount, Mountain, almost home. Beyond, beyond South Mountain was Lee, Lee and of course Longstreet. Strange friendship, grim and gambling Longstreet, formal and pit- tedious old Bobby Lee. The spy wondered at it and the rain began again, bringing more lightning, but at least to Hamlet but at least some cooler, and he tucked himself in the, under his hat and went back to Hamlet. Old Jackson was that, been nicely prince and the flights of angels seemed be to thy rest. First he rode into the darkness, no longer needing, no, no longer any need to hurry. He left the roadway at last and moved out into a field away from lightning entries and signed the rain to eat a lonely supper. Trying to make up his mind, whether it was worth to, worth the risk of going on, he was very close. He could, he began to feel them up ahead, there was no way of going when or where, where, but suddenly they, they would be there in the road, stepping, stepping phantom-like out of the trees, wearing those sick eerie smiles and other men with guns would suddenly appear around him, prodding him back with hard steel barrels as he brought an animal. And he wouldn't, he would have to be lucky because few men roll out at night on a good honest business. Not now, this night, in this invaded country. He rode slowly to stop up, up, he rode slowly up the road. Not really thinking, just moving, reluctant to stop, he was wary, fragments of Hamlet flickered in his brain. If it be not now yet, it will be, will come, rightness is, brightness is all now.
That's, that's enough, that's enough torture for a day, that's enough torture for a day. See, I'm sending you all the, what, hardest vocabulary. Okay, not an easy one, and I can, I think it's very important words, reconnaissance, you know reconnaissance, right? Spy, that's military survey to gather information about the enemy. I risk crazy, now you read it black, only read the black one, only read the definition, but you don't know it, go.
That, starting the act of getting, of gathering enemy info or ter- terrain ahead of an army.
You don't have to read the definition if you already know the definition, but if you only read the definition, but you don't go.
Indigni, indignity, aristocracy, um
Humiliation treatment is something that offend dignity, in dignity, yeah. Chamberlain, no, the, no, no, the, 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 the northern, the northern hero, okay? He's an abolitionist, someone who want to end slavery, yeah, deference, mm-hmm.
Marine, main regu- regiment. Rhetoric.
Rhetoric, rhetoric, how to speak, the act of persuasive speaking. Doc, docma, docma, set of principle, Lee, Rapide Lee. Divine providence, God, the believer that God guided history of human action.
Consternation, feelings of
Invity, worry, fear.
Lookily at something unexpected, mena- melancholy, melancholy, deep, uh, deep
Sad, depression.
Chivalry.
Chivalry, 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 chivalry. Be, respect women, honor bravery, respect women.
Idealized in the South, tactician, someone skilled in military tactics and strategy.
Long Street.
Uh, defensive warfare, entrenchment, fatalism, picket line
Fatalism, no, 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 fatalism, I believe that all event are predetermined and inevitable, especially disaster. You cannot avoid disaster if disaster coming to you, go, picket line.
Line unreconnoited, uh, not yet explored or surveyed, especially regarding land or enemy territory.
Beautiful, 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 is a real person, okay?
Uh, skirmishers, dress works, volley, sabers, okay.
Dragoons, you know dragoons, right? They dress very, a mounted infantry soldier, historical term used the Civil War cavalry, dragoons, no, they dress very well. Now, now, let me show you some picture, let me show you some picture. Dragoons over the image. Ah, video game, video game.
So much video game.
So much video game.
You should say, you, you should try doing histor- you should try searching up
But even video game, historical across, across the world. 你看看他们穿什么样的衣服，okay? Very colorful,你看, different countries, different ages. 这是French people, French,所有的French的dragoon. Okay,然后你还可以试for Germany. Prussia. 啊，Schermont, I bring the American Civil War North. 这是American Civil War North, Civil War dragoons,他们穿的是这样的衣服，okay? Sauce. 对，看看这是 American heritage, 对，very diff- 你看他穿的，用的不同的枪，right?
Hmm.
American Revolution, American Revolutionary War,他们每一个用的枪都不是，都不一样的，okay? 因为它getting better and better,所以说呢，我们通过这个东西可以学到很多很多东西. Okay, that's it, that's it for this wonderful book,你继续读这个书，然后呢，我where's our history book, where's our history book, go ahead, mm-hmm.
Oh yeah, history book is over here.
Okay, cool, 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 cool. Yeah, two, one page, one page is fine, any page, let's you just read, one page or two page,你想读多少读，读，就读多少，okay? 然后呢，我给你个quiz, go.
Okay, I think, um Hmm.
You can do mini money money more. You can do mini money money more, okay?
Okay. Okay, fifty, fifty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Yay, World War One and aftermath.
Beautiful, beautiful, wow, World War One.
This arrived, this name, this arrived, it's name from a rock formation near an oil field. It occurred in nineteen twenty-one involving the US Secretary of the Interior, Albert Baconfall. He, he secretly leased oil reserves on the federal land in Wyoming to to the Mamaw Oil Company for bribes. When this was discovered, prior decision of President, President Warren G. Warren G Harding to take supervision of the naval oil reserve from the Navy and give it to the Department of the Interior was found to be illegal. Though he was not directly in, in place, say, implicit, implicit, in false legal dealers, uh, illegal dealers. Peanut butter, this, the mother of George Washington Carvey, Carver was a slave and disappeared during the Civil War raid. The Civil War raid, her son Carver eventually traveled on to the Midwest and worked his way through segregated schools. He, he accepted a teaching position at the Tuskegee, Tuskegee, institution in Alabama. He used his position as a platform for his agricultural research to find uses for low, low cost crops such as sweet potatoes, soybeans and peanuts. Carver developed one, one hundred and five food recipes Carver developed one, one hundred or five food recipes using peanuts, including peanut butter. He's in, he was an ingenious man whose scientific creativity improved the lives of black and white southern farmers. Indian Citizenship Act, also called the Snyder Act. Uh, this nineteen twenty-four legislation finally gave all Native Americans your citizenship and all the rights associated with citizenship. Those signed into law by President Calvin Coolidge. It was enacted in, in part to recognize thousands of Native Americans who served in World War One. Scopes Trial, also called the Mon- Monkey Trial. In nineteen twenty-five, lit- litigation occurred in Tennessee after the arrest of John E. Scopes, a biology teacher. Scopes thought the theory of evolution and this teaching violated Tennessee law. Those, the prosecution prevailed and scoped, scoped was fine. The Tennessee Supreme Court overturned the decision on techno tech- technically, uh on a technically and, and the case was never further reviewed. The conflict of teaching evolution, right, versus Bible, Bible.
Okay,好,考试了,考试了, stop, 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 stop. 二十个easy question, oh man, I said without answer. 哦,好好好,你来读一下,然后你给我answer一下, go.
This began, okay, this is World War One. This is, um, number two is Germany, number three is French warfare, number, number four was, um, 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 no, it wasn't. It was, um, thing, I remember this shit, but then I don't remember this shit. Uh, okay, um.
Number six, number six.
Uh, number, uh, what about number four?
Number six, what is number, I give you a question, or number five, okay, wow.
US joined the war in this year.
Which year?
They, uh.
Nineteen seventeens, one nine one seven.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. They joined it because they discovered the Zimmerman, Zimmerman Telegraph. Uh, this president led America during World War One.
Who?
That's no, no, true man, um.
Woodrow Wilson, Woodrow Wilson.
Supermansion, okay, yeah, this is Zimmerman. Zimmerman Telegraph, this weapon, first he, okay, it's called, um, it's mustard gla- gas and foreign gas.
Wow, that's in the chemistry, that's in chemistry.
Organization was for first after the first key piece. Uh, failed this, the League of Nations.
Go.
Running the French Palace, it was the Treaty of Versailles, the Empire collapsed after World War One. Okay, that was Germany, I mean, not Germany and Russia, Russia, um, this type of fighting along okay, um, trench warfare, they already did this thing. The term describes the area, but okay, that is no, no man's land. This country switched sides, okay, after, uh, enjoying it. Things like, okay, that's Italy, is it, well. Uh, while it, while technically Italy was while technically Italy didn't really switch sides, he, there was just mutual at first and then and then Italy invaded Austria-Hungary, which made it part of the lot, of part of the Allies.
Wonderful, 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 wonderful.
Okay, um. That is the Western Front, that's American general led US troops into Europe during World War One, um. This is, this act of crime.
From a zero to ten, give yourself a number, zero to ten.
Let's see, um, okay, I say seven, or like, no, you know what, eight.
Okay, I'm going to give you the answer, the easy level. I'm going to give you the answer, you have to review, okay? You have to review. Veteran's Day, Ottoman Empire. Oh, do, 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 boy, what that mean anyway? What is a doll, money, boy, doll boy? Ha, 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 very funny, right? Not read for me, read for me, go.
Doll boys, first to two main themes, a historical slang term for American infantry soldiers particularly during World War One and a popular podcast about trade musts. A podcast is focused by Mike, Michelle and Nick. The, the hit, the term.
Oh, boy.
Originated in, in American war and gained popularity.
Use of flour or pipe clay for polishing uniform, wow. Though hey in the line. The term derived from a soldier's white dust-covered appearance. Soldiers feel the ration. Baked in the floor and the rice mixture of campaign fire. Okay, anyway, so we learn these things and you need to review. You need to review, okay, you need to review. Let me cut this one for you and your mom can send that to you. And.
Okay, well, um, one second, mama. What,你可以charge,你可以get a charger up here吗?
Okay,现在是medium level, medium. 你看你能会多少, okay, medium level,这也不难啊, okay? How much do you know the answer? Anyone that you don't know the answer, you read it loud and clear.
This, um, nineteen sixteen. A battle in short, uh, this British column.
T E Lawrence, and whichever you want to study, let me know. Have you heard about T E Lawrence, yes or no? Lawrence of Arabia.
No, not, not until now.
Then, now I'm going to teach you this guy, this guy is a very important spy. He made most of the trouble for the Middle East. And let me give you a World War One history, World War One history, T E Lawrence. T E Lawrence, and this guy is very famous. Very daring and he, he also caused a lot of trouble for the world, one point two million people. This guy is the number one historian, he's a graduate in Houston. He graduated in Houston High School.
T E Lawrence, perhaps no other.
Now, take notes, you have to get, you show me your notebook, show me your wonderful notebook, young man. Show me your wonderful notebook and then I'm going to dividing the Middle East, the great loot history, so I'm going to teach you the Middle East history and this guy caused all the trouble starting from the World War One, all the trouble in the whole world started from World War One. And T E Lawrence have a big piece in. Notebook, notebook. Notebook, notebook, you're gonna learn, learn so much, okay? And it's pretty full, and it's pretty cool.
Their name from the First World War has the same almost myth-like status as Lawrence of.
Right down, he's a myth-like status. Lawrence of Arabia, right down, Lawrence of Arabia is also a movie. If you watch the movie, it was two weeks in school. You learn more from one movie than two weeks or a month in school. If you understand, try to understand that wonderful movie. Lawrence of Arabia, ask your parent to buy the movie for you from the internet, maybe twenty bucks, they can afford it. Twelve buck probably. And force them to watch it.
Arabia, the modern Robin Hood with his tales of courage and adventure that remain in our imagination even today. And that's the man I'm going to talk about right now.
I'm in. They call the Great War and this dude, this dude is in Houston, St. John's, the best high school in Houston.
Nidel, welcome to a Great War bio special of Who Did What in World War One, today featuring Lawrence of Arabia.
Uh, take, take notes, T E Lawrence, Lawrence of Arabia, he born in one eight 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 and he died in nineteen thirty-five between World War One and World War Two. Oh, when, when he died, Hitler already getting power and if he, if he didn't die by accident, motorcycle accident, he will participate in, in World War Two, okay?
Thomas Edward Lawrence was born in Trimmer Dock, Wales, August sixteenth, eighteen eighty-eight. Quite early in life, he developed an interest in medieval history and military fortifications and would even choose military history and strategy.
Right down, he studied military history and strategy. Especially about Middle East. In the mid, he, he, he studied military history of what ancient time crusade, crusade.
His field of expertise for his exams as a young man. In nineteen oh eight, he joined the Oxford University Officers Training Corps. Britain did not practice conscription, so such corps gave students the chance to practice at least basic military training. In June nineteen oh nine, having been recommended for a job in Palestine, he set off for the Ottoman Empire. But when Britain and the empire found themselves on opposite sides of the Great War in nineteen fourteen, Lawrence was assigned to Cairo and promoted to Staff Captain.
Hey mate, uh, that's not T E Lawrence, that's actually Peter O'Toole playing him in Lawrence of Arabia.
Oh, okay, um, who are you?
Oh, man, this guy is, the other dude is, uh, a history buff, history buff. And, uh, Matthew, if you watch a lot of this guy's video. Write it down, history buffs. That dude makes so much wonderful movie, I probably watched all of them. All of them, and your history will be so high and you don't need me, I'll be sad, okay? If you study.
Oh, sorry, uh, my name is Nick Hodges from History Buffs. I'm reviewing historical movies all the time. I was just talking about the legendary Lawrence of Arabia. You should come over and check it out. I mean, did you know that the soldiers in the movie are actually played by the real Jordanian Arab Legion?
The Arab Legion, well, you had my curiosity, but now you have my attention. You see, I too like historical movies.
Great, I'll make sure to send my fans over to you if they want to learn more about the real Lawrence of Arabia. See you around.
I will see you around, thank you. All right. His job.
Okay, guys, uh, not guys, Matthew, if you love the good, good history book and history movie. I can get you to the national level and international level. Compete in Rome and compete in Paris, competing in Washington DC, and it's pretty cool, okay? And then you can go to the good restaurant and go to travel around the world and hopefully finance by your school, right? So you will bring honor to your school and they supposed to pay that.
At the official survey of Egypt at Giza was to collect maps for the war in the Middle East. He would monitor the drawing and printing and also supervise the encoding and decoding of telegrams. He apparently enjoyed his work, which he immersed himself in when his brothers Frank and William were both killed in the European theater. Now, Britain had its hands full in the Middle East. To protect the Suez Canal from the Turks and secure Egypt, four hundred thousand men were needed. The Gallipoli Campaign was a big.
Right down, Gallipoli Campaign is the biggest disaster for the British Empire. Gallipoli did campaign is one of the greatest disaster for the.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, talking about animations and historical animations, so there's a dude uh, and, and in his channels called, um, his channel is called, um, J D Briggs. So he does Lego animation of historical battles, what were mainly, mainly World War Two, there's also some more, there's also World War One.
Share with me, share with me, you can share screen, you can share screen and play. Yeah, I give you ten minutes to do your history channel share screen, so I teach you, you teach me.
Okay, right now.
Wow, cool.
Oh, yeah, he also has his, he also has this online store right now.
Don't buy stuff, oh, he trying to sell his stuff.
Yeah, he, he's really successful.
Wow. Hey, Matthew, why don't I train you to be the national champion and you build your website and sell the toys? These rhetorical toys, right?
All the perks with a PF Black Card for one dollar down and twenty-four ninety-nine a month.
There's a reason Chevy is called the heartbeat of America, a heartbeat strong.
Yeah.
And then, so how he does it is first he makes the builds and, and, and he like adds like effects and everything is pretty. You should, you should subscribe to him.
I will, I will. Yeah, you play for five, three minutes and then you explain to me what's going on, okay?
The entire video is like four minutes, it's around four minutes, the entire video.
Okay, good. Now, when you play, you explain to me what's going on, you explain own words, go.
What?
Use your own words to talk about historical facts of this campaign.
So, it was very unaccept, it was like very like unsuccessful and I think Winston Churchill like.
You are so right, Winston Churchill make the terrible mistake, congratulation.
And then, um, and the turn, but then it was a ride where, variety, so because some places they're easy to, they're, they couldn't land without much resistance, other one places, they're like right into hornet's nest, but then once the, but then when the when, when the, uh, Allied forces were in, were actually on, like on land, there was trench warfare and then and then the German U-boats came along and, and then started sinking the supply. And they had, and it had to be evacuated.
Wonderful, wonderful. Wonderful, now you keep on talking. You keep on talking, whenever there was any information, you just put your information there, not only their information, go.
Oh, yeah, a lot, a lot, so based on the video, many men were killed when they were rolling to the shore.
Cool.
Oh, yeah, also, I think this is a quote, it says, I do not command you to fight, I command you to die, from like Ottoman.
That's right. Wonderful.
Then so, so by this part, you can see the Ottoman are, are standing in a trench, making vulnerable, but then they, but then the British are like entirely vulnerable and they also have the high, also they have.
High ground, yes, the, the Turkish people have a high ground. And the Turkish people have a advantage of the otherwise from the German officer, right? German officer, advisors.
It's like, it's, there's like more, there's like, like, so basically over here all the way to, so they're just trying to storm the beach. So like this, they're gonna keep on trying to storm the beach for the next few, like next few moments on this animation.
Uh huh, Matthew, let's make it into a tradition.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
Make it tradition, let me, every week, every class, you have a ten minutes presentation time, you share with me.
They did have artillery. So suggesting on this, they did have, so, so based on this picture right here. So, based on picture right over here, this, they did have like artillery, based on that.
Wonderful, wonderful, uh huh.
Which, and then artillery against soldiers, charging soldiers, that was pretty effective, but not that effective.
Wonderful.
Because it takes time to, because it takes like more time to load a artillery, an artillery gun than, than, than like any, like a normal sniper, like a normal caliber.
Good job.
Oh yeah, um, so it's called JD Bricks.
Mm-hmm.
And then so, so there's also, um, oh yeah, there's also some American Revolution ones. This one over, over here is. Uh, okay, yeah, um, this is the Battle of Can.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I like, and yeah.
What they call L C M Brick Show, yes or no?
No, no, it's not called the L C M Brick Show.
Oh, JD Brick Production, wow. How many people, how many subscriber, well, almost a million?
Yeah.
Wow. Almost a million, so, so you are learning from me, I'm learning from you, how about that, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And, and, and then I like how he does like, so there's like the, he just makes like a little uh, like credits over here on the bottom and then there's like a little summary over here.
Wonderful.
I like how he does that.
Good job, good job, good job, okay, now it's my turn, it's now it's my turn again.
Let's stop sharing.
My turn again, so your homework is to watch this whole video, T E Lawrence, or how he become Lawrence of Arabia, so this one is a real history, this now, say it loud and clear, this is a homework, okay, you can, you need to finish this thing at home and and because this all about World War One. And on Monday, I'm going to work with you on Middle East, Middle East.
Constantinople, April twenty-fourth, nineteen oh nine. In his palace, Sultan Abdul.
Dividing the Middle East. All the trouble begin from here. And when you finish the first one, you will do the Arab Revolt, you will finish number one and then number two. Excuse me, I was joking and it's almost like a video game, so.
Hamid the Second can hear gunfire and artillery. Street fighting rages in the ancient city. Monarchist forces are besieged in their barracks in the European Quarter, surrounded by the constitutionalist army of action. Last summer, he had bowed to the constitutionalists, these so-called Young Turk revolutionaries, and restored the eighteen seventy-six constitution and reconvened the Ottoman Senate for the first time in thirty years. But that only lasted ten weeks before his supporters in the army smashed it in a counter coup and restored absolute monarchy. But that great gamble he sees has failed. In three days, the Young Turks and their army of action will enter the palace. They will convince religious authorities to issue a decree deposing Abdul Hamid and replace him with his brother. Then it will finally be the Young Turks' chance to.
Do you like the style or no?
Um, I, I mean, that's okay, I, yeah.
If you don't like it, uh, it's okay, uh, not the movie, the Lawrence the movie. Lawrence of Arabia. Let me tell you the, go through the trailer, the historical trailer. The trailer. Let me go through this one with you.
I deem him one of the greatest.
I deem him one of the greatest human being alive in our time, Vincent Churchill, I think Vincent Churchill.
Things alive in our time, we shall never see his like again.
I think it's Vincent Churchill.
His name will live in history. It will live in the annals of war, it will live in the legends of Arabia.
Who is he? Bet. Tavas. What is your name? My name is for my friends. None of my friends is a murderer.
Turkish army are cracking down the Arab revolt. Turkish army are using airplane in World War One. Killing the Arabs. And he's organizing the Arabs to attack the Ottoman Empire.
Oh, so this is supply train.
That's right. guerrilla warfare, he's using guerrilla warfare.
For over a quarter of a century, controversy has raged around the name of T E Lawrence. No man of our time has drawn upon himself so much praise and so much criticism.
Okay.
Lawrence of Arabia, the man torn between two civilizations. Lawrence of Arabia, filmed against a canvas of.
Okay, Matthew, I give a lecture on Lawrence of Arabia twelve years ago. Before you were born. I was teaching this movie before you tell your parents, I was teaching this movie before you were born. So I know a lot about this wonderful movie, if there's, no, 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 there's no other homework other than this one. There's only one and you just research this movie as much as possible and I will find out my lecture about this movie. Twelve years ago or thirteen years, or twelve, I think twelve years ago. So this one, the Great War, the Great War and it's become real history. And you can buy this high definition Lawrence of Arabia.
Can I show you another video?
Uh, next time, next time, next time, it's my turn, it's my class, why trying to steal my class? Why do you do that, okay, uh, uh, yeah, we have some time, we have some time, we have some time. Now, this Lawrence of Arabia, I will give this Wikipedia to you, Lawrence of Arabia, this film. Okay, this one is the Wikipedia and this one is, I happen to be your homework. And you just, you don't have to finish all of them, but as much as possible, if you hate it, if you don't like it, don't do it. Only when you like it, I'm not going to torture you if you don't like it. Now, can you read for me, one paragraph, go.
Okay, Lawrence of Arabia is a nineteen sixty-two epic biographical adventure drama film directed by David Lean and product, produced by Sam Spadijo through his British company, Horizon Pictures.
Okay, okay, stop, stop, this one is, uh, is not the real history, okay, plot, go, plot.
Okay, plot, T E Lawrence died is in a motorcycle accident in nineteen thirty-five. His life is memorialized at Saint Paul's Cathedral, but becomes clear that many influential Britons, Britons like dislike him. During the First World War, Lawrence is a misfit British Army lieutenant, notable for his insolence and education. Mister Dryden of the Arab Baruch sends him to meet with Colonel Harry Brighton, who's, who is advising Prince Feistl and his revolt against the Turks. On the, on the way, Lawrence is outraged, is outraged when his guide is ruthless, is ruthlessly, ruthlessly killed by, um, ruthless, ruthlessly.
Walk for the week and is to watch and study this wonderful film. If nothing else, you don't have to do anything else but this, this film and.
不能呐，怎么弄?
Okay. 这个，这，这电影是the one of the worst in the world history,好吗? One, no, no, one of the best, I'm stupid, okay? So if you can study this film. 所以说呢，okay, so I, if nothing else, if you study this one, you can learn so much. Uh, and, and then we will learn more World War Two. 哦，好了，最后五分钟，最后五分钟，your presentation time, okay? Present anything you like to study.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, I think there's like this, um, one that, this, what, um, so, okay, I'm gonna go back over here, another one of these, uh, okay, um, okay, yeah, Battle of Legion, so.
My work is easy because I use.
So, so I want to show you the ingenious design, I want to show you the ingenious design, it's like really, it's really strong. So, so this is. I'm okay.
The battle, oh, oh, cool. Wonderful.
So yeah, so this, so you get like, so this is a war, so this is a design right now, this is the triangular design. It's based off a real fort.
Cool.
And just like your arms prepare fire, fire this boom.
我们形成一个传统， 给老师做presentation.
Okay, and then, and then, and then, um, and then, so, and then, and then, so they're gonna get to like this part. Oh yeah, so they're getting to this part where they're getting to the big Bertha house.
Wonderful, mm-hmm.
It's like very effective for the fort, this fort. But it's, but it's so strong, it has to be mounted in concrete.
Wow.
To get a little idea of how, how actually things assembly automatically.
Good job, good job, good job. Wonderful. Wow. See, you can learn so much from this movie and then you can do further research, how the artillery was made, how the engineering design was made, right?
And then, it's a very effective, it's a big shell.
Yeah.
Like it's a big piercing shell.
Let me take a picture of the, the title, the title, the title, the title, so I will study it, okay?
Battle of Legion.
The, 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 the. Wonderful, wonderful. Hmm, wonderful. JD Brick Production, then I will send you more historical accurate part.
What?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead. So next class, I will see you on Monday exactly the same time, okay? You're morning at nine, nine AM. My time is eleven next week, Monday.
Yeah, so, so one turtle was, was, was getting, was taken out from one shot, so that just basically.
Wonderful.
How, how, like, how, um, how powerful the, um, Big Bertha was.
Mm-hmm.
And then they usually, oh yeah, okay, let me see, where was that part? I need to see, okay, okay, so, so they, so this, so this say, say, this sort of says that there were underground tunnels and bunkers inside the fort. And, uh, and then for like shelter and like storage.
Wow. How long was the class, is a one, I supposed to be one hour, is it one and a half hour already? Oh, it's half an hour, I forgot, my, my brain doesn't work anymore, Matthew, you remind me.
Yeah.